I call this budget session of that Mall County School Board February the 17th meeting to order. We'll have a moment of silence. And as our usual procedure, we must read this statement into our meeting or into our minutes rather. The minutes of this meeting should reflect that this meeting is being held electronically per se into Virginia State Law and Alamo County ordinance. Because the COVID-19 pandemic makes it impracticable and unsafe to assemble a quorum physically in a single location. The meeting is being communicated to the public electronically through Zoom and streamed live on the Alamo County Public Schools website. And public comment may be offered through the Zoom waiting room feature, but not tonight in accordance with the school board's protocol or by written submission. And our board members really briefly, Dr. Kate Acoff.
Kate Acoff, Jack Jewett District.
Mr. Jono Elkar.
Jono Elkar at large.
Katrina Col, Ms. Katrina Carlson.
Katrina Carlson, Rio District.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee Rayvanna District.
Mr. Dave Oberg.
David Oberg, Whitehall.
Ms. Ellen Osborne.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District, student rep for this quarter, Elizabeth Albaran.
Hello.
Good to see you, Elizabeth. And we are now ready for the budget presentation by Dr. Haas to lead us off with the presentation. Dr. Haas.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Page. I will go ahead and just jump right into it. Good evening, School Board members, colleagues, and school community members. Before I get started, I would like to share my gratitude with our school community, our students, families, employees, and partners for all that you have done to support Alamo County Public Schools and for your efforts to keep Alamo County Public Schools moving forward during the pandemic. We have learned that everyone's support is needed to truly fulfill the mission of our schools. That mission is the title of our strategic plan and our draft funding request. It is learning for all. It is the idea that our schools are here for all children and families through the trust and resources of the whole community. This year, as part of our strategic plan to empower communities, we asked our principals and department heads to host focus groups made up of students and employees to hear their ideas to improve working, learning, and climate conditions in their departments and schools. We used the Virginia Department of Education's School Climate and Working Condition Survey results for each school as the basis for these conversations. We have channeled the themes and ideas from that engagement through the strategic plan during the planning part of our cycle. And now we are moving into the budget development phase with our school board. After this phase, we will move toward adoption. As we take time to review our budget goals, our budget development goals, goals that our school board established approximately four years ago, I'm going to pause to say thank you specifically to our Fiscal Services Department. Amy Hottinger, Anita Moore, Anne Heineman, Avis Morse, Christopher Harper, Dan Chipman, Jackson Zimmerman, Liz Perkins, Maya Kumazawa, Michelle Shiflett, Nanette DeFrank, Rita Dean, and Stephanie Grady. Thank you. These budgeting goals really serve as a quality check for me. To be transparent, if I knew nothing else about ACPS, my takeaway from these guidelines is that our school board plans ahead, puts people first, especially children, make sure that our taxpayers' dollars are spent according to the plan, and insists that we follow the plans we say we have for each dollar allocated. I've mentioned our strategic plan a few times already, and here is the outline of the plan on just one slide, including the overarching vision, mission, values, and the big strategic goals of our plan, learning for all. Our plan is locally created, locally situated, and through our collaboration with Batel for Kids, it is a nationally benchmarked plan. While we develop the plan in consultation with diverse representation from our students, employees, families, and community members, the plan shows alignment with national level research and best practices. The fiscal year 2023 draft funding request asks for investments in all three of our big strategic goals, thriving students, affirming and empowering communities, and equitable transformative resources. The strategic plan is a compass for our funding request, and it acts as a guide, giving direction for our resources and actions. We also have a context for our funding request that truly sets the stage for our work, not just for next year, but for years to come. Maybe it goes without saying, but as we watch the headline scroll on this slide, I will say that every issue we are facing here in Alamo County Public Schools is an issue for public school systems all over Virginia and across the country. Every problem, every challenge, every opportunity you name that is impacting us here in ACPS is a national problem. Our draft spending plan aims to keep us on the course we set through our strategic plan and aims to help us do what we can to bolster the stability of our workforce, our employees, as we move forward. Yes, students, families, educators, staff, administrators, and so many others in school districts, state educational agencies, institutions of higher education, and communities across the country are immersed in the hard work of ensuring equal educational opportunity for all students. One benefit or silver lining to facing challenges that are widespread is the opportunity to learn ideas from others that will help us succeed. Whether through meeting weekly with superintendents from Region Five, attending the National Ed Leader 21 Superintendent's Roundtable each month, submitting research requests, and attending webinars provided by our national research partner, the Education Advisory Board, or through attending Virginia Association of School Superintendents gatherings, my staff and I have tried to learn from the successes and mistakes of others, as well as our own, as we have been navigating the pandemic. Many of our lessons learned are reflected in our draft funding request for FY 23. And so, as we get into more specific details of the funding request through our next several slides, I'll bring back the strategic plan one more time into focus. All of the strategies to which we ask the board to consider allocating resources are aligned to the three big goals of the strategic plan. Over the following series of slides, I will provide just some highlights of our strategies for accomplishing the big strategic goals through our budget. I will begin with goal one, thriving students. In just a couple of weeks, we will be in the month of March, which is the Virginia School Boards Association's Equity in Education Month. Here's what the V S B A has to say about equity in education. When inequity in education persists, there is a cost to all involved, including missed opportunities for economic development, greater dependence on government support, and fewer Virginians ready to serve and lead. With the added inequities that have resulted from the COVID-19 pandemic and the challenges that we are faced with economically, it is more important now than ever before that we, advocates and servants of public education, are addressing these inequities head on. This is why it is so important that all of our students thrive academically, socially, and emotionally in our schools. Not some or most, but all. All means all. And I want to remind our community that in our current school year, the school board has made substantial investments in research-based strategies, the tried and true methods to address our students' academic recovery. Our board doubled the amount of intervention funding for each school in order to increase intervention time and expand tutoring opportunities with an investment from the federal recovery funding. Last summer, we sued a half million dollars in recovery funding to expand summer programming. We invested $2.5 million in recovery funding to reduce class sizes this year below pre-pandemic levels through additional staffing. And our board invested $2.3 million in recovery funding to add a counseling position to each school dedicated to coordinating mental health support and family engagement. All of these investments are in progress in the current school year and intended to positively impact students' academic recovery. I am certain that all of us would agree that the most important element for a thriving student is a qualified and collaborative educator. In Alamo County, our school community values small class sizes. And over time, through the focused investment of our school board and through both regular and differentiated staffing, we have reduced our student-to-teacher ratios in our elementary and secondary schools far below those required by the Virginia Department of Education. Note that in FY 2020, our average elementary class size of 19.6 is approximately four or five students below what the state requires through the standards of quality. On these charts, the state's class side stand, size standards are marked with a star. Ours are marked with a circle. Also in FY 2020, our average class sizes of 21.5 for middle schools and 21.6 for high schools were approximately three students smaller than those required by the standards of quality. During the 21-22 school year, class sizes were reduced further due to lower-than-projected enrollments and by allocating additional FTEs using federal one-time pandemic relief funds. This proposal adds 30.5 FTEs in recurring operating expenses with a goal to maintain the average class sizes seen during the 21-22 school year. Our draft funding request proposal reduces our current average staffing ratio by one student at each school level. Our ACPS mission statement says that, working together as a team, we will end the predictive value of race, class, gender, and special capacities for our children's success through high-quality teaching and learning for all. We seek to build relationships with families and communities to ensure that every student succeeds. We will know every student. With that mission as our guide, we must adapt to the changing needs of our students and families if we are to be successful in meeting the learning needs of all students. Because when we are successful in reducing the impact of achievement gaps for our historically marginalized students, we will be more successful with all of our students. Though we've seen fairly static enrollment of students with disabilities over the course of the pandemic, the needs of the students we serve continue to increase in severity. In response, our fiscal year 23 funding request includes an additional 8.98 FTEs to bolster our specialty staffing models. These models include specially-trained teams of special educators and instructional assistants. We use evidence-based practices to address the specific and complex needs of groups of students as well as individual students. This shift recognizes that different students need different levels of support within the context of maximizing access of students with disabilities to the general education classroom and their typically developing peers. This evening's work session will feature more details and discussion around our special education staffing models. When we look at staffing for our English as a Second or Other Language Program or ESOL, we see a similar staffing strategy, one based on the belief that students with different needs require different levels of supports. Since our September 30th count, only four and one-half months ago, an additional 106 English learners have joined our school division. Based on Virginia's staffing standards, which mandate that we must staff 20 ESOL teachers for every 1,000 English learners, we should be funding about 30 FTEs. But we currently fund 37, and we're asking for one more FTE in this funding request. Our request supports a differentiated staffing model that allows us the flexibility and responsiveness we need to support the individual needs of our English learners. Learners who present varying levels of English proficiency, learners who are spread out across all of our 25 schools and 726 Square Mile County, learners who have experienced interruptions in their formal education, and some learners who present complex trauma profiles, increasing the need for additional staff to support both language acquisition and social-emotional learning. ESOL staffing is another area we will discuss in more detail during tonight's work session. Another form of staffing that has really turned out to be increasingly critical and one that we want to leave less up to chance so that we can support our educators and our students is our substitute teacher workforce. In an effort to attract more highly qualified substitute teachers, ACPS will implement multiple substitute program improvements. We aim to help student, schools, we aim to help schools provide in-person instruction when faced with teacher absences by staffing each school with one to four permanent substitute teachers, depending on the size of the school. We aim to improve same-day fill rates by increasing the daily compensation we offer substitute teachers. We will work to incentivize current school staff who already know our students and our school routines to substitute for teachers when they're absent. And we will do these things while maintaining competitiveness in the current wage market to attract high-quality substitute teachers. This proposal adds 46 school-based substitutes and one central substitute coordinator. Our need to affirm and empower communities within the schools is crucial for our students' success. In fact, one of our four core values is, as articulated in our strategic plan, is family and community. We will engage with and share the responsibility for success for students, families, and community partners. Over the next four slides, I will share four strategies we propose to fund in fiscal year 23 to create greater affirmation and empowerment within our community. Expansion of resources for culturally responsive teaching, professional development, sustaining our increased school counselor presence for the coming school year, devoting time and resources to our community forum initiatives, and funding our technology replacement program. We propose an increase of just under $200,000 to add more stipend opportunities for culturally responsive teaching. All new ACPS educators are required to participate in Alamo County Public Schools' culturally responsive teaching training. The funding request also includes $100,000 in additional funds for professional learning stipends for classified employees so that our classified staff may be reimbursed for professional development expenditures, just like our licensed employees. In fiscal year 20, we elevated the safety and well-being of our students at our five smaller elementary schools by increasing the part-time school counselor allocation at each school to a full-time position. The proposal added 2.5 FTEs. Also in fiscal year 20, we expanded our counseling program at the middle school level by adding one FTE between Jack Jewett and Lakeside Middle Schools. In fiscal year 22, even in the midst of decreasing enrollment, we added one full-time counselor to support social-emotional learning at every school using one-time federal funds, adding a total of 24 FTEs. We're proposing to maintain this level of service in fiscal year 23. Plus, we're adding one FTE for a counselor at Center One in response to increasing enrollment there. Last fall, the division began hosting student, family, and employee forums in alignment with goal two of our strategic plan, with the intention of sharing ways to connect and to get the most out of engaging with ACPS. By holding a series of brief, focused, engaging forums with small and diverse groups of these stakeholders, we hope to affirm and empower participants, increase their connectivity with us, and create a ripple effect of engagement among their circles of influence. Also at the division level, the International and ESOL Program, in partnership with our Department of Technology, hosts a monthly technology support night for multilingual families. These meetings, each of which features different technology topics, provide an excellent opportunity for multilingual families to get the answers to their technology questions that they need and to connect with each other. At the school level, this fall, every principal was asked to host two meetings in October, one for students and one for staff, to solicit input on how we might improve school climate and working conditions through budget proposals for the 2022-23 school year. Then, at the end of October, we asked two students and two employees from every school to come together in a division-wide meeting to discuss budget priorities for the fiscal year of 23. Additionally, the division hosted a number of information sessions and other community engagement opportunities this year. There's a long list of topics here. I'm not going to read them all from my notes, but many were relevant to ACPS, including COVID-19 mitigation strategies, what is culturally responsive teaching, anti-racism orientation, equitable grading practices, school safety, high school redesign. All of these opportunities were offered in addition to inviting our school community to participate in multiple surveys, serve on advisory groups such as our school name review committees, and the redistricting advisory committee. And of course, speaking at school board meetings during public comment. And I want to come back and say to our school principals, I want to give you a huge thanks for hosting those working conditions and climate-focused group meetings with your schools right smack in the middle of dealing with the Delta variant. Thank you. I know it was a lot, and I hope you see the results of your efforts in our draft funding requests. Y'all make such a positive difference. The Department of Technology's mission is to empower all members of our learning community by providing exceptional technology solutions and support that results from collaborative decision-making and effective, timely communication. Our technology replacement program proposal prioritizes providing exceptional support of our digital learning environment, optimal functioning of complex machines and programs, and digital security. Our ability to support these priorities hinges on reliable hardware capable of running up-to-date resources as well as an adequate number of talented staff members who can provide individualized and timely support to our teachers, students, and staff. There, again, there's a long list of technology replacement items that I have here in my notes. They include machines such as student laptop replacements, teacher laptop replacements, display technology. We've got a lot of CTE specialty labs out in the schools that are, need to, need to get on cycle for replacement, tablets for our younger children, security cameras, fiber maintenance, and much more. So much in the background. There's so much of this now that is in the background of our work. And I think we take it for granted here in Alamo County because generally, when I, when I sit down and we all sit down to get to work, we need the technology, and when we push the power button, it works. While funding our technology replacement program is a means of empowering our students and staff to engage with our school community, I want to make the point that many of our budget proposals, including our technology replacement program, support more than one of our big strategic plan goals. In addition to enhancing the ability of our students, families, and staff to engage with us, getting the right computer technology resources to our educators and students is a key component of our third big goal, which supports transformative teaching and learning through equitable resource allocation. One of the four core values identified at the outset of our strategic plan is equity. We will provide every student with the level of support necessary to thrive. What is the best way to embody this value in ACPS? It is to ensure that our educators and support staff have what they need to address the academic, emotional, and physical needs of their students. The slides in this final section will highlight just a few of the resources, employee-related and capital, we have identified to meet the needs of our students, employees, and families. Our staff retention and recruitment proposal includes strategies for attracting, developing, and retaining the highest-quality staff while leveraging our resources to meet the compensation needs of our staff. During the current year, we are implementing a 4% compensation increase in a little over a week from now. In addition, a 6% salary increase is proposed for the beginning of FY 22-23 on July 1st. In addition to these steps, a comprehensive compensation study is planned in the coming spring to review instructional and classified positions against their true competitive markets and to provide further recommendations for teacher and classified pay scales and the supplemental pay schedule. 880,000 of this proposal will be used for targeted pay increases for certain hard-to-fill positions based on internal reviews as well as the results of the compensation study. An additional $350,000 of the proposal will be used to provide adjustment pay to select groups of non-exempt employees due to changes in the payroll structure and cycle that we've been going through. We can explain in more detail during the compensation work session. This strategy is a way to continue to help hourly employees cope with our mandated change to positive pay. Besides helping to bridge gaps in pay periods, these adjustments will have the added benefit of increasing the overall annual pay for positions such as bus drivers, teaching assistants, and office assistants above the compensation increases we are composing. And one more note. With the pay increases outlined on this slide, we will have completed the work to guarantee our promise of the $15 minimum wage proposal that the school board approved to begin in fiscal year 22. $2.4 million of our proposal and our proposed spending plan will go toward covering a rate increase for our health insurance plan without sharing the increased cost with employees. Our current health insurance premiums actually went into effect five years ago in the 2016-17 school year. With the exception of a temporary increase lasting only six months from October 2017 to March 2018, we have not had a rate increase for employee health insurance since then. Alamo County Public Schools and Alamo County Government are both currently supported by one human resources department. And this has been the case for at least two decades. We have decided to separate into two human resources departments to better serve our localities' growing and more complex workforce needs. As of July 1st, 2023, our goal is to restructure, staff, and provide the technological support for our human resources department to shift to what I would refer to as an employee services department. In order for us to accomplish the creation of our own HR department, we will need to add staffing and restructure the department with four dedicated focus areas. A center for expertise that focuses on HR functions such as compensation, benefits, wellness, and safety. A service center to allow employees both self-service and in-person access to respond to their questions. And business partners who will work with ACPS leaders, including principals and department heads and employees to support school, department. and employees to support school, department, and/or employee needs. And we will need to invest in an human resources information system or an H R I S dedicated to Alamo County Public Schools employees. Right now, all major technology operations for human resources are currently owned, operated, and supported by Alamo County Local Government. As such, A C P S will need to implement its own H R I S to support the H R-related needs of the school system. Two F T Es are recommended to be added to the Department of Technology to serve as an H R I S administrator and as a technical support specialist. This proposal adds three-point-five F T Es to the Department of Human Resources, the aforementioned F T Es to the Department of Technology, and will need to add funding for new talent and recruitment expenses as well as for ongoing costs associated with the Human Resources Information System. Now, this is a new section to our draft funding request. As part of the needs-based funding request for fiscal year twenty-three, I want to bring attention to our capital needs. The highest priority capital projects as recommended by the Long Range Planning Advisory Committee on September ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and affirmed by the school board on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one are listed on this slide. These are the school division's top capital needs over the next five years. While the operating budget moves us forward with regard to the services provided to our students, employees, and community, without the underlying facilities infrastructure that provides adequate capacity and optimal learning environments, we will be severely hindered in our work. Requested school renovations at all levels would mean substantive investments in our school buildings, including the implementation of recommendations of the High School Master Plan Study. A phased, multi-year approach would bring the school division's aging schools to modern standards to include improvements such as electrical infrastructure updates to accommodate technology, ensuring classrooms have natural light, improvements to adhere to the Americans with Disabilities Act, outdoor learning spaces, and reconfiguration of spaces to improve function, efficiency, and safety. Perhaps the most substantial roadblock to continuous improvement facing our school communities are teaching and learning spaces that average more than fifty years in age and are limited so that we are forced to utilize more than eighty mobile classrooms or trailers at twelve or about one-half of our schools. We have not added a new school to our division in twenty years when the population of our county was thirty percent less than it is today. Regional planners advise us that over the next thirty years, Alamo County's population will expand by another thirty percent. The strategy of continually expanding facilities built in the early years of the twentieth century and continuing to add even more mobile classrooms is not sustainable. It's not in the best interest educationally for our children and their families, nor does it represent our future as a thriving and prosperous county. I want to note that part of our draft funding proposal for school board consideration is the allocation of one-point-five million dollars in revenues to the C I P earmarked for A C P S school renovation work. For the first twenty-five slides of this presentation, I have outlined our strategic draft spending plan. Over the final few, I will provide a high-level view of the revenues allocated to us to fund this plan. And this is where I pause to express my gratitude on behalf of the students, families, and employees of Alamo County Schools to our local taxpayers, our Alamo County community members who fund the lion's share of the costs needed to fund the endeavor of learning for all. I also want to thank our Board of Supervisors and, of course, our county executive and his staff for the collaborative and transparent efforts we make together to prioritize the education of our community's children. Our local revenues reflect what we're seeing at the state level. Tax revenues are strong, and we are seeing the benefits at the local level. Together, local and state revenues make up more than ninety-seven percent of our revenue stream. We're anticipating a seventeen-point-six percent increase in local revenues. That's an additional twenty-five-point-four million over fiscal year twenty-two, and we're looking at eleven percent increase in state revenues, which is an increase of six-and-a-half million over state funding in the current year. Even through the pandemic, both local, uh, both the local government transfer, which makes up most of our local revenues and state revenues, have been steadily increasing. The F Y twenty-three local transfer projection is primarily based on what we're seeing with local revenues in the current year through the second quarter. The significant bump in F Y twenty-three of twenty-six-point-three million, that's an increase of nearly nineteen percent over F Y twenty-two, is a reflection of the current year's reality. The strong increase at the state level is due to higher sales tax revenues per pupil amounts, a lower local composite index for A C P S, and increasing enrollment. The governor's budget from December has all indicators in favor of A C P S. As this graphic shows, we are dedicating majority of the increase in revenues as an investment into our employees to reward and with hope to retain them and compensate them for the tremendous work they have been doing. I believe this market-driven increase is absolutely essential to encouraging our employees to stay the course with A C P S and to attracting employees into our positions as we prepare for the next school year. The second largest change is in support of our strategic proposals, several of which we've talked through this evening, all aligned with the big three goals of our newly adopted plan. These proposals will move us forward using strategies that are supported by detailed logic models in the budget document, ensuring that we will meet our objectives. One-time expenses that are budgeted into F Y twenty-three also serve as a contingency for revenues that may decrease through the budget process or in F Y twenty-four. At this point, I'm presenting a balanced draft operating budget of two-hundred-and-forty-two million for F Y twenty-three. And here is what happens next. Tonight, uh, we'll have a work session on class size reduction and staffing. At the second work session, we'll look at compensation increases, substitute program improvements, elementary school assistant principals, human resources redesign. The third work session is devoted to health services, school field trip funding, technology replacement program, and the furniture replacement program. And of course, this is a draft proposal, and it's all part of the process. And we welcome questions and topics for discussion over these sessions from the school board. In closing, I have noted on several occasions these past two years, difficult, risky, and inconvenient as they have been, have revealed uncommon strengths. Students have experienced learning environments known to no other generation of young people. Learning has been different, not lost. Students have felt the support of caring adults who enthusiastically offer the expertise and their will to keep alive curiosity and energy, to focus on assets and not the deficits, to advance learning for all. I'd like to thank our school board, our Board of Supervisors, and our partners and local government who come together to support our important work by putting student interests and those of our families and our community first. I must thank the cabinet and the leadership team for your strategic and technical support. Our communication staff has provided excellent support through this process and will continue to do so. I want to especially name Jennifer Butler for creating these slides to tell our story in precise images. And I want to thank Maya Kumazawa for your technical approach and your strategic vision. You've brought the two plans together. Thank you. I am grateful for the thousands of families who partner with us, the thousands of employees who move us closer to our mission every day, and our students who constantly teach us valuable lessons about the human spirit that so powerfully bring to life the turning points of transformational opportunities. Thank you for your time and consideration. Mr. Page.
Thank you, Dr. Haas, for your, um, for the presentation uh, for our next budget. We will now, uh, go into our budget development, uh, work session. And our team will come forth with this.
All right, I guess we will jump right in.
Thank you.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. The purpose of our work sessions is to unpack the draft funding request that you have just heard about, answer your questions, and get your feedback and guidance in preparation for developing the school board's funding request. This evening, I'll be facilitating our first budget work session. It will be followed by two more budget work sessions over the next two weeks, and the March third work session will include a public hearing. You're scheduled to approve a school board's funding request on March tenth, and that will be formally presented to the Board of Supervisors on March fourteenth. Our agenda this evening will be to first provide an overview and introduction to the budget book and its contents. I'll be highlighting some of the revenue and expenditure drivers throughout. Then we'll take a closer look at enrollment and demographics with our ESOL and Special Education Department staff. I plan on pausing throughout this agenda to take any questions that you may have. If you have a budget book in front of you, um, you'll see that the document is broken down into these sections. Anyone can now access the budget document at K twelve, Albemarle dot org forward slash twenty-two hyphen twenty-three hyphen budget. There's a link for each section so that you can jump around the sections. Section A contains high-level information about the budget itself and about the school division. It also contains summary financial information about changes when compared to the F Y twenty-two adopted budget for both revenues and expenditures, with a focus on the school operating fund. Section B is all about our school fund revenues. Here, you can read about every revenue source, look at historical data, see what assumptions we used, and changes since F Y twenty-two. Section C provides an overview of expenditures. For those of you who are technically minded, there's a detailed explanation of how expenses are coded and categorized by budget code. It also includes summary information by expense type, functional area, and location. Finally, this is the section where you would find historical and current compensation and benefits assumptions that are applied throughout the entire budget. Section D provides detailed budgets by school location. Section E provides detailed budgets by department. And section F provides detailed budgets by special revenue expense. Section G is my favorite section. Although it's physically located last, this is where you find the information about how resources are allocated to schools. It contains the detailed projection, staffing standards, and school-based F T allocations and operating budget allocations. So let's open up our books and get to work. In the top right corner of every slide, you will find a reference to the budget book if you'd like to follow along this evening. If at any point I'm moving too quickly or you can't find the reference I'm talking about, please interrupt and let me know. We first begin with our strategic plan, learning for all. Dr. Haas has introduced this already, and you will see how the budget aligns with the strategic plan throughout the document. The details of the plan can be found on pages A nine and ten. I have included this slide here again to bring your attention to pages A twenty and twenty-one in the budget book, which outline our budget goals as well as our budget guidelines and policies. This serves as the foundation of how resources decisions are made throughout the year. Are there any questions before I move on about, um, the structure or the budget book contents? Right? We will now move on to section B, school fund revenues. In F Y twenty-three, our draft funding request projects an increase of thirty-point-eight million dollars in revenues. This increase is primarily due to an increase in the local transfer from Albemarle County and an increase in projected state revenues, as Dr. Haas has stated. We will first discuss the local transfer of shared revenues. Examples of shared revenues include general property tax, sales tax, business license tax, vehicle registration, transient occupancy tax, and food and beverage tax. These available shared local taxes are first adjusted for payments for debt service, capital improvement program funding, City of Charlottesville revenue sharing, tax revenues that are dedicated to specific expenditures and other items. After these adjustments are made, the county shares sixty percent of the increase or decrease in available shared local tax revenues with the school board, and that's what makes up the local transfer. With the exception of F Y twenty-one, the local transfer has been steadily increasing over the last few years. F Y twenty-two was also an exception. We adopted a local transfer of one-hundred-and-forty-one million, but have received two revenue updates since that budget was adopted. We are now projecting a transfer of one-hundred-and-fifty-three million dollars in the current year. For F Y twenty-three, we are projecting a local transfer of one-hundred-and-sixty-seven million dollars, which is a nine-point-five percent increase over the current year. However, you will see the eighteen-point-seven percent increase over the adopted figure when we talk about budget changes throughout this budget process, since our starting point will be F Y twenty-two adopted numbers. I will next move on to our second-largest revenue source, which is state revenues. Section B contains detailed information about how each line item has changed, but at a high level, these are the primary drivers that have led us to an eleven percent increase in state revenues. When we talk about expenditures later on, we'll talk about how budget to budget enrollment is decreasing, however, enrollment. In addition, our local composite index or ability to pay has decreased, leading to an increase in state formulas. Per pupil amounts for various programs are generally increasing, and sales tax projections are also increasing. Finally, we are being held harmless for some impacts that have resulted from the pandemic, including overall enrollment. Here's a closer look at state sales tax revenues. We're seeing a pretty significant shift in F Y twenty-two between what was originally budgeted and what is now projected. The F Y twenty-three budget will hopefully bring us closer to reality. A few notes on sales tax revenues. As sales taxes increase as part of the state basic aid formula, the sales tax increase is partially offset by a basic aid decrease. So we typically do not see the full impact of sales tax changes. In addition, as the State General Assembly continues through their budget process, projections will continue to change for both F Y twenty-two and F Y twenty-three for sales taxes and other state revenues. I'll pause here for any questions you may have about our school fund revenues. Next, we'll discuss expenditures. Here's our, here's a look at our total school fund expenditures and what type of expenses they cover. Throughout the book, you will see that about eighty-six percent of our expenditures cover compensation and benefits. Here is how that looks on a more granular level. Almost sixty percent of the budget is spent on salaries, followed by V R S, health insurance, and FICO. The assumptions used for salaries and benefits are detailed in section C of the budget book, uh, beginning on page C twelve. Non-compensation and benefits expenses make up only fourteen percent of the budget, and they include mostly departmental costs such as transfers to other funds, including a transfer to local government, school bus fuel, and utility maintenance and lease costs at our schools. Whoops. We show expenditures in various ways represented by the expenditure sections in the budget book. Section D comprises school-based budgets. These are costs that can be directly tied to individual schools. Examples include principals, teachers, and custodians. Section E comprises department-based Section E comprises department-based budgets. These are costs that cannot be directly tied to individual schools. Examples of these are bus drivers and maintenance. Finally, Section F contains our sun. Special revenue funds are self-sustaining, meaning that revenues and expenditures must balance within each individual fund. Examples include fee-based programs whereby user fees are set to ensure expenditures are covered, or grant programs whereby the expenditures budgeted may not exceed the grant revenue that is projected. We will first focus on Section D, School-Based Budgets. Because these expenses can be directly linked to specific schools, we show our school-based budgets by school location. You will see that throughout the section, there are two pages dedicated to each school and a detailed breakdown by expense type and functional area. In addition, these pages show the FTE allocations to each school. That's what makes up more than 90% of the budgets. As you might expect, budgets are largely driven by projected enrollment. The larger the school, the higher the FTE count, and the larger the budget. How exactly are the school-based budgets determined? Enrollment and demographics form the base of the budget. Using these assumptions, we apply established staffing standards to the budget book. The resulting FTEs assigned are shown beginning on page G18. These FTEs make up, on average, about 94% of a school-based budget. The remaining 6% of the budget is for supplemental pay, such as long-term substitute pay and operating budgets, which are managed by principals. Here's a chart that provides a breakdown of per pupil expenditures by school. This is simply a calculation of the total FY23 school-based budget divided by the projected K-12 enrollment of each school. Per pupil budgets, as you can see, range between $10,000 and $15,000. These numbers will differ from division-wide per pupil amounts, since departmental costs are not included here. The red line in the middle corresponds to the right axis and shows the total budget amounts. In general, schools that are smaller tend to have higher per pupil costs, and schools that are larger tend to have lower per pupil costs. In addition, the demographics of a school play an important role when looking at per pupil expenditures. I will pause here to see if you have any questions about expenditures or school-based expenditures in particular.
Ms. Kumazawa, put, again, did you say the red line represented?
And that shows the, the actual total of the budget. So the total budget for Albemarle, for instance, is the highest. And that's why there's a peak there. It's the same, it's the same data as two slides prior, that red line.
And it aligns to the numbers on the right? That's what confused me also.
The axis on the right. All right. We'll move on next to department-based expenditures. I want to pause for a moment, though, to talk about the vital role that departments play in moving our strategic plan forward. While department FTEs may not necessarily be inside the classroom with our students, they support our goal areas of thriving students, affirming and empowering communities, and equitable transformative resources. While each department is only shown under one goal area on this slide, in most cases, departments align with all of the goal areas, as these areas overlap and work together to achieve our mission. Throughout Section E, you will see specific strategic plan objectives that each department supports. These objectives have strategies and projects in place, managed and tracked by departments to push the strategic plan forward. Here's a snapshot of department-based budgets. As you can see, the largest cost departments are building services and transportation services. These include FTEs that represent building maintenance workers and bus drivers, in addition to operating costs such as fuel, tires, school utilities, school leases, and custodial supplies. The technology and fiscal services budgets include non-departmental costs, where costs have not been assigned to specific schools such as furniture replacement or technology licensing costs, and other division-wide costs such as transfers to special revenue funds. Finally, we move on to special revenue funds in Section F. Special revenue funds contain programs that typically require separate accounting and reporting of revenues and expenses. Many of these programs are funded by federal and state governments or fees. Although the accounting for these programs is maintained separately in the budget book, the provision of these services to students is integrated within our overall school division operations. On this slide, a few of the largest special revenue funds are highlighted. The Child Nutrition Fund is $6.1 million. Fee-based programs like Child Nutrition and EDEP, or Extended Day Enrichment Programs, must cover their expenses by charging fees and updating them each budget cycle to ensure that the rising costs of compensation and supplies are fully covered. Other funds include internal service funds, such as technology replacement, which funds the replacement of student and staff devices, among many other items. Grant funds such as Title I are incorporated into the overall staffing at schools. And while the accounting for it is separate, again, the services seen at the school level are combined with school fund operations. Are there any questions about departments or the special revenue funds? All right, I'll move on. I'm assuming that this is, makes perfect sense to you, and that's why there's not any questions. Um, so I just have a couple of slides dedicated to enrollment and demographics. The K-12 enrollment projection for next year is 13,648 students. I'm showing the historical data here as a reminder of some of the wild fluctuations we've seen during the pandemic. Since 2012, our projections have been closely wrapped around actuals as they get updated each year as a result of new enrollment. In FY20, we saw a stark enrollment increase to over 14,000 students, or 300 students higher than what we had projected. We continued to project an increase in FY21 to reflect the previous year's increase, but that was a year of our largest decline due to the pandemic. As we build towards FY23, we are projecting an increase in actual enrollment as represented by the orange dotted line, but a decrease in budget-to-budget enrollment as represented by the blue dotted line. We believe that this projection represents growth due to growing development in the county and students returning back to our schools. However, the reality is that homeschooling is increasing and had been before the pandemic, and we're using this current year's enrollment as a new baseline. Here, packed onto one slide are the changes in budget due to enrollment and demographics, with the exception of special education, which will be presented later. The reason why this is shown altogether is because these items are related and cannot always be distinguished from each other. First, the budget-to-budget enrollment change. The decreasing enrollment results in 29.4 fewer FTEs for the division based on our current staffing standards. Other smaller changes include a slight reduction due to the Crozier redistricting study that was approved, a modest increase in rural languages staffing, and small increases in Center One and ESOL staffing. These increases are offset by the elimination of contingency FTEs that were budgeted in the FY22 budget. After these enrollment and demographic changes, we are proposing to maintain the level of staffing that we have in our schools this year by reducing our staffing ratios by one student. In doing so, we would be adding back the approximately 30 FTEs that are reduced in the top portion of this table. This net change results in an approximately zero FTE change from budget to budget in this category. Dr. Haas presented this class size reduction proposal in the draft funding requests, and I'm here to take any questions that you have about this or other enrollment and demographic changes.
Maya, I have a question. So I, just doing head math, which is often wrong. So do we have, are we projecting 71 more ESOL students?
Yes, that is what. Lauren will be on during the next section to talk more about enrollment change, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
I have a question, Maya, but it, it goes back to the school, school expenditure, so I can wait till the end or whenever it's convenient.
Okay. Well, thank you. I will turn this over now to Lauren McLean, our Assistant Director of ESOL Programs, to talk a little bit more about the ESOL enrollment.
Maya, before you go, just one, one quick question. And that is, in years past, when we've had questions in the early stages and all throughout the budgeting process, we've been able to send them in to an email address, and then they kind of get answered over the course of the following week. Is that setup going to be the same this year?
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. The email is budget@k12albomaral.org, and you can email that at any time, whenever you think of something as you move through the budget book.
Thank you. I'll be in touch.
Dr. Akaf, did you want to talk about the expenditures?
Well, I was just, I was, my question has to do with the work session and the program evaluation we did about differentiated funding and how that played out in this budget. I mean, two, is my understanding that two of the main ways that principals utilize that differentiated staff funding was to reduce class sizes, which we're doing across the division, and also perhaps to add some mental health or social workers, which we're also doing. So what kind of impact has that had on the school-based operational funding? I've flipped through school by school, but perhaps you have a bottom line for me.
We are still working on ways to incorporate that evaluation into the budget. We thought we needed further discussion with the school board on what actions you wanted to take in terms of changing our formulas and staffing standards to incorporate any of that feedback. So as of how the draft funding request stands, there are no formulaic changes that have been made besides the class size reduction.
Thank you.
Okay. Was there something else?
No. I was going to ask about the comp study. That wouldn't occur until after the new funding year, so we're talking about a salary increase for '23, '24, correct? Perhaps it's salary, something in, the results of that study wouldn't apply, whatever they are, until '23, '24.
We have earmarked some funding as part of the compensation increase to address the most urgent needs. It won't necessarily address, we don't know what the scale of the results of the study will be, but that study will be underway this spring, and we will, we plan on discussing more about that at next week's work session.
Thank you.
So if you have any questions ahead of time that you would like addressed next week, just let us know. All right, Ms. McLean?
Thank you, Maya. And thank you, everybody, for giving us the time to talk about our ESOL students and their enrollment. And so the first thing I want to talk about is just our staffing model. And the state requires that there are 20 ESOL teachers for every thousand English learners. However, we staff over that model, and our current English learner count is 1509. This includes students who have tested out and are in monitoring phases, and so that's why it may look different than Maya's original number. But when we look at this number holistically, it means that we would need an FTE of approximately 30 teachers. We currently have an FTE of 37 instructional staff. And the reason that we staff over the VDOE model is that there are really three main reasons that it doesn't quite work for us. The first is that it groups all of our English learners as a monolith. However, we know that students at different levels of English proficiency require different levels of support. And so we staff based on a combination of the number of students and their present levels of service, and adjust these ratios across grade levels to account for the different learning that newcomers need, whether they enter in elementary school compared to secondary school. The second reason is that the state staffing model does not consider the different number of students at different schools. It treats them as all being at one school. And so our students are spread out across every school in the county, and therefore, we want to make sure our staff can service our students across all of these schools. And the last reason is that the state ratio does not take into account the sociopolitical context that we see from our ESOL students, specifically our newcomer students. And our newcomer students are largely comprised of Central American teenagers. And as a result of the recent natural disasters and increased political instability that we've seen in the area, an increasing percentage of these students have interruptions in their formal education. And what this means is that teachers are working to leverage the strengths these students bring to scaffolding content and language learning at the same time to ensure they can meet grade level standards. And our students, as a result of these interruptions, are also coming with increasingly complex trauma profiles, which increases the need for additional staff to support the language acquisition and social emotional learning of our students simultaneously. And so if you look at the next graph, this shows the amount of English learners served by ACPS. And again, this includes our students who are presently classified and our students who have exited but are still being monitored. And so our EL population has increased this year to already exceed the projection from last year. We've enrolled 1,590 students to date. And so based on this data, we project having 1,569 multilingual learners next year. And then if you look at the next chart, it illustrates our FT allocations for the next year without additional staffing across all of our schools. And this staffing is based on the population at each school. However, our current staffing model means that our urban ring secondary schools are not staffed fully according to the staffing model we use, which is why we seek to rectify this through the addition of an additional FTE. And so the need for additional staffing comes from our increase in newcomer students, the definition of which can be seen on the left. We've received 292 newcomers this year, largely in our urban ring schools. And we know that our newcomer students bring many strengths, and to capitalize on these strengths, we need support in addressing the differences in their prior education and the American education system. We've also seen an increase in our newcomers with complex social emotional needs, particularly as we've enrolled 71 students from Operation Allies Welcome. And so due to this increase that we've seen and our continued projected increase, we seek to add an additional FTE to be used in our urban ring secondary schools, specifically to provide additional support for newcomer students and especially those with limited native language literacy or interrupted formal schooling. So are there any questions?
So I'll go ahead and ask my question here. Again, just doing the head math. It seems as though adding one FTE It seems as though adding one FTE still puts us below the ratio that we were at before last year. Is that correct?
So it should put us at the same ratio we were at the last year. It's just in terms of when we look at our ratio, the ratio of students to teacher varies from one to 20 for a student who's a newcomer or one to 50 if they are in, say, a Level Four have recently exited. And so when we look at the ratio, it kind of depends on the breakdown of the students at each school.
I see. And so this will put us back to where we were before. Because I guess my question is, just based on the numbers, it doesn't seem like it quite puts us back to that ratio. And I also wonder how successful that ratio was. Like, my question is, I guess, if we can measure the success of what the ratio has been in the past and what that looks like and fund appropriately for the ESOL population.
So we can look at getting the WIDA data and specifically the growth data that the state looks at to track English learner progression and look at the different ratios and we can collect that and provide that to you all. Thank you.
Ms. McLean, I don't know if this is a question for you or not. What kind of, with respect to our community outreach, how does that work with our ESOL student families? Or do we have any specialized outreach for these families?
Absolutely. And so we employ a family engagement and student support liaison within the ESOL office, who specifically works to ensure that our families are included and liaises with a lot of different departments and schools for this reason. We also put on monthly multilingual family tech nights where we support our families in learning new strategies and partner with kind of the different departments to find more opportunities to engage our English learner families in terms of getting into the community with them.
Thank you.
Can you describe a little bit about the difference between monitoring and when they're prior to that?
Absolutely. So when students first enter the Virginia Education System, they're administered a screening assessment that determines their English language proficiency. If their home language is a language other than English, students who score at a level one through four are considered English learners who receive services. Each year, they take another assessment that determines how much they've grown. When they reach a level 4.5, they're considered proficient. And so they move into a monitoring phase. For the first two years of that monitoring, they still receive services as needed. And then for the last two years, we're really just monitoring to ensure that they're still making appropriate growth and if not, looking at what supports would need to be added.
What does a 4.5 mean as opposed to a four? What would be the difference of what somebody can do?
Yeah, it depends on which of the four modalities of language they struggle with. But I'll go ahead and say that most of our students struggle with writing the most. And so usually, it's the difference between being able to write in a way that uses academic vocabulary. And so a Level Four student may be able to use Tier Two vocabulary, but a Level 4.5 student would be able to use really Tier Three content-specific vocabulary to form a coherent response.
Okay, Ms. McLean, you mentioned allied welcome students coming in. What language is ordinarily would be theirs, would be the language that they'd be having as their native language compared to other students? If that's a question.
Yes. So our Operation Allies Welcome students are students from Afghanistan. They largely speak Pashto and Dari, and our population skews a little more towards native language speakers of Pashto. This is not new to us. We have welcomed many students who speak both of these languages, but it is a large increase in the number of students who speak both of these languages compared to our predominantly Spanish-speaking population.
Okay. Ms. McLean, how many languages does the ESOL department support at this point?
I'd have to look, I'm tempted to look at the flyer that I know is right next to my desk, but I believe it's 36.
Thank you.
That's a whole lot of languages.
And I'm happy to confirm that number for you all at later date.
Okay.
I know on our webpage, we say we have 69 different home languages. So, but that doesn't mean that everyone needs the same level of support through school. I really want to commend Ms. McLean. She joined us coming into this school year, really hit the ground running. I think yesterday when we were preparing for this work session, I'm pretty sure you were on a school bus. And she spends a lot of time out riding school buses, making sure that families that are new to the school system do not miss that connection with the school. When Alma High School and Montel High School were really struggling earlier in the year to connect with families where speakers of other languages, one of the first strategies was Lauren and her staff getting out there, riding the buses, welcoming the students, making sure that their needs were met when they came into the schools. Um, one of the strategies I wanted to mention, that's the technology strategy, sorry for, I dropped a piece of paper. Um, we're actually going to be bringing on board a message translator through Bright Arrow. We're abandoning Blackboard Connect because it's starting to sunset and it's not really meeting the needs of the school system. But our technology department is bringing on a program to take its place called Bright Arrow. And that's our messaging system. You know, when you get, when you get an email from the school system, that's through Bright Arrow. It used to be through Blackboard Connect. The new system that we're bringing on will be a text messaging system that school staff will be able to use, every teacher will be able to use it, and they'll be able to text directly with families. And when they text, they'll text in their language. And when the family receives the text, it'll be in the language they speak. So, um, I think that's going to be pretty transformative. And I know that Lauren and her staff have been part of that process of working it through the technology department. But I did want to point that out as one of the, it's not a staffing strategy, but it's certainly a key strategy around meeting the needs of these students. So I really want, you know, I think you're doing a great job, Lauren, and I keep up the great work. And we're so glad you're a part of our school system.
Thank you. And if there are no other questions, I'll gladly turn it over to Kevin Kers, our Executive Director of Student Services and Special Education.
Thank you. Thanks, Lauren. Thank you for allowing me to have a few moments of your time to unpack, go a little more into detail with regard to the special education portion of the proposed draft budget. I would like to review the enrollment projections while, as Superintendent Hassad mentioned, our numbers do primarily to the pandemic have been flat. There are some signs on the horizon that numbers are going to increase, specifically the number of evaluations that we're processing. The Director of Special Ed, Katie Compel, and I just today looked over the number of referrals. And we are outpacing even our busiest year, including trying to make up evaluations after the pandemic shutdown in March of 2020. So that is one indicator. The other is the increase, which I'll talk a little bit later, of preschool enrollment. So both of those, because one of the lower enrollment areas for students with disabilities is in kindergarten. It seems to be like we're making up that ground. So those are two indicators I'm looking at as projections are that we're going to see us back on track with previous trends in the Department of Special Education. In the past, certainly at the, prior to about eight, nine years ago, special education funded what we call generalists. And that would be special educators were expected to work in our neighborhood schools with kids with disabilities. And we're expected to know all disabling conditions, all the evidence-based practices for all of the nuanced impairments that children present to them and ways to instruct, measure progress. And what we found, what I found is really that model of jack-of-all-trades really played out of master of none. Parents weren't happy, staff felt stretched thin and always on the edge. So what we've done over the past eight or nine years, really since 1314, is begin to shift and focus on specialty models for the provision of services for students. And if that's what I'd like to highlight here, away, there is still a place for our generalists. I don't want to say that doesn't have utility because our generalists are very important. There are many, the largest population of students of those with special, with specific learning disabilities in our general ed classrooms. But there are students with other disabling conditions that require much more intensive supports. That's where we started to build out these specialty staffing models. And I just wanted to walk through them and give an opportunity for you to ask any questions. The first is early childhood special education. So on the graph, I'm moving from the bottom up and, but explaining side down, giving some more detail. But you'll see in general, the trend is all of these specialty staffing models are increasing based on the needs of the children in our neighborhood schools. So early childhood special ed pre-K, while you'll see that there's been no change there, part of the funding request does expand early childhood special education, but it's in the community. So I wanted to highlight that. We're looking to provide more inclusive opportunities for our preschool children with disabilities and networking more in our communities and within our schools with other preschool programs. Our A base is a resource model for students with autism and similar characteristics that use evidence-based practices and have the supports of special staff to make progress and to access the general ed classroom. Typically, they're staffed with one special educator and between two and four instructional assistants based on the grade level of the student and where that model sits and the need of the classroom. We cap those models at about eight students, students with autism. The next group is, or the next model is our B base program. And that is, and B stands for building appropriate supports with evidence. And the B is for behavior. So children that are struggling with behavioral regulation, getting their needs met in a way that respects those around them and the learning that's taking place. When they struggle with that, we have this model set up. And all of these, the A base, B base, and C base are available across the school division at each of the grade levels outside of preschool. So B base is staffed with a special educator and typically one to two instructional assistants, again, based on the grade level of where that program sits. Then we have C base, which is an inverse. The A base and B base models are by default inclusive models. The kids are expected to be out in the general ed classrooms with supports by the staff. C base, on the other hand, is providing, it starts in C base with core instruction in aligned standards of learning for kids with significant cognitive impairments with the focus on providing as many inclusive opportunities, supported inclusive opportunities as possible for students in the general education environment. So I want to highlight that. Previously, in the past, we had referred to C base by many different names, right? Functional skills classrooms, community-based instruction. But they are, we're generalizing to C base. And the C stands for curriculum. The staff in this model is bridging the need of students to access the curriculum in the general education environment. Then what sits on top of all of these models are our multi-school specialists. These include the incredible support services of our speech pathologists, occupational physical therapists, school psychologists, teachers of students with vision impairments and hearing impairments, our autism and behavior specialists and adapted PE. And I hope I didn't miss anyone because they are critical. What we've learned is the infrastructure, they provide the infrastructure, the glue and the support for these programs and to work for both the staff and the students, really to align ourselves with the vision and mission of Albemarle County Schools. And this next slide really highlights very similarly. But again, it just breaks out the different staffing models for a clearer picture of. That's where the investment in staffing is going and the FTEs that we are continuing to invest in our base models. And initially, we moved in this direction really for three reasons. One was for the student. We needed to do more and do better for our students with disabilities. And two, for families, families weren't happy with the jack-of-all-trades model to special education. And since then, there's general support, I would say. And you'll hear that in a few weeks from our Special Ed Advisory Committee in particular, that support this move toward specialized models. But the third, and I wanted to at least put out some data here, was to address what the state has called really runaway, they use the word runaway, but an overreliance on outside service providers for kids with disabilities that pose challenging needs to public schools. So on this next slide, it shows the number of students that we in Albemarle County Public Schools have sought services from private day schools. That's the light green. Private day schools are those like the Virginia Institute of Autism, Elkhill School, Keys Academy, Lafayette School, to name a few. Those are located in the community for students that we could not serve appropriately in our public schools. And in the dark green below is a public separate school. That's Ivy Creek School, right behind Jewett and Greer. And those are, that is a school for students with significant emotional disabilities that require intensive supports. And you'll see generally over the years, even since 1415, this has been relatively stable. Now, the placements within each, you know, fluctuate, but generally stable, which is in, is opposed to the next slide, which is some data from the state level that has been trending upwards. So our surrounding divisions, the state is still trying to grapple with what they consider out of control referrals to private day and public institutions for students with disabilities that pose challenges to public schools. So I just wanted to highlight that, at least that point. And I do think you'll hear from our Special Ed Advisory Committee that supports our base models and where we're going. But also, our, we are educating our kids in our public schools through these models in a way that bucks the trend across the state. My next slide that I'd like to present is really a follow-up to some data I presented, at least, I think it was last year, where we had data to suggest the pandemic really took impacted the number of students with disabilities that are preschool-aged as indicated by our enrollment, a significant dip in 2021. And we do believe it was based, right, on fear and the unknown of the pandemic. But the good news is that things are coming back, right? We've just reported in our December first count, 129 preschool children with disabilities that we're serving. When I checked on Monday, that number was When I checked on Monday, that number was one hundred and seventy, just since December first. So there is an active referral and eligibility process and service delivery models. I predict after all the transitions are done and based on our the data that we have, that we're probably going to be again, back on track with similar trends and trend data in previous years with students in preschool, that these students were not included in the earlier enrollment slide, but I do believe that they will probably hit around a hundred and sixty students with disabilities at preschool level, which is good news for us. We want to provide those services and that, as I said earlier, is part of our, part of the special ed staffing request. So in summary, special education staffing, the request is for a little over little under or over seven hundred and thirty nine thousand dollars and just under nine FTEs, which would go to staff our neighborhood schools and these specialty models and the multi-school, multi-school support staff that really hold them all together. And on the right, this special education services funding is for what's called the Children's Services Act. And that is for, as I mentioned early, private, earlier private day schools and residential programs for students with disabilities. It is a fund that matches the funding that comes from the state for those two purposes. And why I'm asking, that's the bulk of the request there is there are general costs that are increasing and somewhat significant, right? For salary and benefits of just those programs to run. But also on the horizon are very few students in very costly placements that I need to plan for and they're going to happen, they haven't yet. But I do see an impact financially that warrants the request for these special education services. And part of that three hundred and thirty thousand is also a, an increase to our Piedmont Regional Education Program that we still utilize for ancillary services like assistive technology and we're adding on some time for mobility and orientation services for students with vision impairments. We, we had a very difficult time contracting for that very specific service, but it's a very limited amount of time. And we believe prep can help us out in that regard as well as Ivy Creek School. We are still maintaining twenty nine seats there for students with serious and significant emotional disabilities. And that is the state and request of special ed. Any questions?
Mr. Kers, that was a great overview and I, and I really appreciate that. Will you be coming back with us during the budgeting process or may I ask you a couple of very direct questions now? Which would be better?
Whatever is your pleasure. If I can't answer them, I certainly take them and get answers for you.
Okay, thank you. You had mentioned the special ed advisory committee coming to talk to us later in the year. Last November, I believe it was, they wrote us a letter requesting funding for summer school for, for students and that, that who had not been included in last year's summer school. The eighty five thousand dollars that is in your, in budget for and is aimed at summer school, is that covering what it is that they had requested?
It's, it covers part of it, Mr. Al Caro. So it covers the required, the mandated extended school year that's part of IDEA for students whose progress is jeopardized in the fall and IEP teams make those decisions. And it also covers our support of the general ed summer school programs. We are able to assist them and support inclusion of kids with disabilities by providing instructional assistance to their programs. And that's, that's been successful in the past, but I'm not sure it directly addresses all that the special ed advisory committee requested. So I could double back on that and read that specific, but um, that's what that eighty thousand does.
Thank you. I, I would appreciate it if you could take a look at that and see if, that if we were going to make an addition into the budget to cover that, you know, what, what, what we're talking about.
All right, I'll do that.
My other, one of my other questions is that we've all been aware of some parents who are concerned about their special needs students with the changes in some of our mitigation practices and the impact that it could have on them. Are you all, you know, focused on that and, and, you know, I don't know if you can answer it in total right now, but can you give us an idea in terms of what, what you're going to do to be helping those families?
We are, as we've usually done, we're going to balance, right? Because that's what these times are. Balance that line of legal requirement with individualized needs for students and IEP meetings, we actually met with staff today about that. So no, I can't answer the full, other than we are consulting with our council and looking at best practice and what we can do to address this issue. But, but it's quite limiting. But we want to support our families and, and yeah.
I, I understand, you know, thank you for that. And my last question has to do with, I know that there's been, there have been some challenges this year in hiring TAs and, and, you know, in some cases, teachers. What's your strategy for the, the next upcoming school year?
A partner, right? With as, as many as I mentioned, as many departments as we can, right? To boost and to get out the word and use our community connections as much as possible, which we've developed over time. So we've done national stuff, we work very closely with the folks, our supports down in human resources. And so through professional organizations, we publish and post on the walls at universities, not just UVA, but in the area. We have connections as far up as Philadelphia for placements for internships to try and foster students to come in internship here and then stay. So we have a lot of things going on. We, we take this very serious, but as far as, so that's, that's sort of the projected. Which is what you were asking about, right? Like what are you getting prepared for, for next year?
Yeah, yeah.
It's an early start and using as many leverage points as we can to pull people in.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Sure.
Are there other questions from the board, Mr. Kurtz? Okay, Mr. Kurtz, like on the graph you showed seven twenty one for projected year. And then I didn't write the figure down, but you mentioned another figure that had already exceeded one of your projections. So as far as you think, the seven twenty one will still be what we should expect in enrollment next year, right?
Seventeen twenty, yes, for students K twelve in our public schools, that's what I'm expecting. That's right. The other number were just, were preschoolers. And they're both in our schools and in the community, but I did break, we did break those out separate. I, I do, I, I'm, yeah, it's, it's feeling like it's going to happen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, Ms. Kumazawa, are you going to come back or?
Yeah, sure. I have a few closing slides.
Okay.
So thank you for Mr. Curtis and Ms. McLean and all of the school board questions. As a summary, these are the budget changes that were talked about this evening in terms of specific proposals. So as a next step, I went through this in the beginning, but we will meet again a week from today. And at that work session will be employee and HR focused, focus on the organization. So proposals that you see that are related to compensation, benefits, staffing levels that will be covered and healthcare will be covered during next week's work session. The third work session will cover some of the remaining proposals. But if there's any other part of the budget book as you work through it, that you want to learn more about, hear more about, we can certainly bring that up at the March third work session as well. That'll give us a week before the funding request is approved. Are there any questions about the schedule? All right, as Mr. Al Caro mentioned, if there are any questions from the school board or from the public, then you can email budget@k12albemarle.org. And the detailed funding request is posted on the website by section for you all and the public to read and ask about.
Okay, thank you.
I know it was a whole team that put the book.
Thank you all for your time this evening and I look forward to seeing you a week from now.
Dr. Akoff, you had a question?
I was just going to say that I know it was a team effort, but the, the budget book was very well put together. And I appreciate its clarity.
I want to thank Christopher Harper, who's on the background of this call, our senior budget analyst, who has put in the, all of the work in getting our budget pulled together with a lot of the changes that we've seen, especially in recent weeks with revenue. So thank you for that, Mr. Harper.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Hassbo. Your budget presentation to us tonight, including the capital needs, which is really something very, very important in the budget. So thank you for including that in tonight's presentation. Thank you, Ms. Kumazawa, Ms. McLean and Mr. Kurtz for your presentations to us tonight. And we look forward, Ms. Kumazawa, to seeing you on the twenty fourth and March third, at least, right? All right. So thank you all. Do we have any other business either by board members or by the superintendent?
I do not.
Okay, Dr. Tass. Board members? Okay, if not, budget work session is adjourned. We thank you all for your participation and we'll see you next week, February twenty fourth.
Take care, everybody.
All right. See ya.
Good night.